Okay, we up and running? Oh, God. Okay, we're gonna call a meeting to order.
Oh.
Is that okay?
Where do you want to do?
Well, look at all our people here.
I've got all day.
Do we have any minutes of reports? We have no, okay.
I have a feeling it's gonna happen anyway.
Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports.
All right.
A RPC meeting yesterday, and the bulk of our discussion was on developing a community legacy fund to fund various nonprofit organizations and stuff. Actually, kind of a neat concept, but anyway, it might be something that we look at. The idea behind it was is that you capture some of the dollars of people that may have been lifelong members of the community and be willing to invest in a legacy fund. And if that fund got big enough, then you'd basically just fund those nonprofits off of the interest off of the fund. So it was kind of neat. A lot of communities are doing it. Boomville's got several funds that they have in place. So just if you want more information, I can pass that along to you.
Oh, my turn?
Yep.
We've got leadership tomorrow morning. You all going? Get that invite?
Yep, I'm going.
Okay.
I'll try to make it.
Los Angeles Fire Protection District, I have a dance Saturday night. Super Bowl Sunday. Monday's holiday.
Is that your holiday?
I just made motions, all I'm saying. Yes, it's holiday. Do not call me Monday morning. I will hunt you down.
Because it's Groundhog Day or just because it's today?
That was Pee-wee. Pee-wee's not here anymore.
It's the day after the Super Bowl. It should be a holiday.
Pee-wee's...
Unpaid?
We got boys on in it. We'll get rid of... It's been that way for 20 years. I've gotten over that part, Larry. Don't have to rub it in. Thanks. I was having a good day. No, but we could do that. Get rid of Columbus and have the day after Super Bowl. What did Columbus do? You wanna go there?
No.
You're insulting the Italians.
We are gonna pound sand today.
I'll walk in. He said so, he didn't do anything. Y'all better move on. You're gonna lose a holiday.
You got anything?
No.
Okay, I've got Capital Region Medical Center's Board Retreat tomorrow. Saturday, the Navy Club is having a chili cook-off, so do that. Then we're doing a book signing at Samuel's for Jeremy Amyk's new book. And then next Wednesday is Ham and Bean, Lion's Ham and Bean. And we're actually gonna deliver to the courthouse. So anybody that buys tickets, we will deliver.
Can I get mine without the beans?
Yeah, you can get chili if you want. You can get hot dogs with kraut. You can get hot dogs with chili.
Can I get the hot dog without the kraut?
You can get whatever you want.
How long you got today? Because I can keep going.
No. Okay.
Too much caffeine.
Okay. Appointment... Appointments by commission, and we're reappointing Vicki Ford to the Library Board.
I made motion to reappoint Vicki.
Okay.
To the Library Board.
Second.
Okay. Don't need a roll call on that?
No.
Nope, okay. So then we added Adam Viley. So what do we have? How many open seats do we still? Just one? Two?
I think Viley took one, and if she got reappointed...
We have four.
Okay, I thought there was only three up, so...
Well, one is up in March.
Okay, so close.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I don't have the list.
Sign that. Sign that. Okay.
We'll get you an update.
I was seeing how many we had left open. Because if somebody wants to jump up and volunteer for it.
And you guys are always signing stuff before we vote.
Melody said sign, and I do what they tell me to do.
I'm gonna give you a pay form. Of course, the auditor might nix that, but...
Okay.
I was signing the contingent upon the approval. If we didn't approve it, we tear it up.
Yeah. Do we have any unfinished business? I'd go for commission comments, but I don't know about Jeff today, so...
I'll hold.
No, we have nothing?
I'm gonna defer to the second half.
Okay. New business, Approval of City-County Agreement, Setting Fourth Procedures for Joint City and County Capital Improvement Sales Tax Projects.
We have Matt Marash, David Bangy from City of Jefferson to discuss. There's actually two agenda items, and the first one is a city-county agreement which would have to be approved first by the county. And then the second item would be the project that's part of that, and it would be basically the county concurring with the city awarding or signing a supplemental agreement with George Butler Associates for design of this project. And the project is Stadium and Jefferson Street, improvements to the Highway 54 interchange area, more or less everything on the west side of the inner... the west side of Highway 54. So I'll turn it over to David and Matt, and you guys can explain more.
Yeah, I think Eric's covered it pretty well. I mean, there are two items basically that we're looking for you to give us concurrence on. The City Council has taken a look at this already. They're meeting this past two weeks ago. And so essentially, what we have is an agreement similar to what we've had several times now on our joint county-city projects. We had one just several months ago when we were looking at the design contract for the work that's being done on the eastern side of Highway 54. And so the one that's going to be before you today is very similar to that except but for the design on the western side. And then, once that agreement is signed, then the second stage of part of that is we've been working with George Butler and CNPS to do the design of that project once we have the agreement in place. And so they're working presently on the design on the eastern side, and this would be the design for the western side. And so those are the two, basically, pieces that we're asking for you to give concurrence on today. I brought along some sketches and some schematics if you wanted to see kind of what that entailed. Certainly let you all take a look at those. And then if we had any other questions, we'd be happy to answer those. Right, the design contract for that, the piece that's associated with this agreement is $254,000, of which $203,000 would be paid through STP funds with the state, and then that would leave about $50,000 to be split evenly between the county and the city. And so we'd be looking at about $25,000, or $25,000 each for that design contract with the state picking up the rest.
So it's cooperative between city-county and MoDOT?
The funds for MoDOT actually came, were approved through Campo and given to the city for this project. And so while the city is going to have an agreement with MoDOT, that's sort of outside of the agreement between the city and the county.
Okay. So in the financial portion of this agreement, it's 2.4 million. Does that cover the design, or is that just estimated construction costs?
No, the 2.4 is estimated to include the design right-of-way and construction.
And then the only other thing that I have in looking at this agreement, and of course, come back to it, but so it's my understanding that we'll go to construction on Monroe and Stadium this year?
Correct. Actually, the preliminary plans are due to us on Monday, and so we've been working with CNPS mostly since they're the ones that are doing the drawings, to try to work out some of the details there, and we think we're pretty close. And then the final plans from the consultants are due on March the first. And so we would hope then to be able to turn around and actually get that project bid from the city's standpoint, and would probably be back up to talk to you about that, approval of that contract, probably the end of March, beginning of April.
Okay.
We've got the right-of-way.
Right, we've been working on acquiring the right-of-way. There are three parcels, residential parcels, that were total takes. We purchased one of those on Monday, and we'll purchase the other two this coming Monday. And then there are a number of other little slippers and pieces that we're still working with, but that process is moving ahead.
This is right-of-way for Monroe Stadium?
Correct.
Okay. And so we'll still have to acquire right-of-way for Jefferson and Stadium?
Right, and that's part of the reason that we're, you know, it may seem like this is kind of far in advance, but ultimately, because of the MoDOT funding, the federal funding in the project on the western side, there's some additional hoops that you have to jump through in terms of acquiring that right-of-way, and so it takes longer. And so we're hoping to get this started a little sooner than we did the project on the eastern side.
Okay. And the only other thing, under projects here, I see Engineering Services, City Contracted 2015, Right-of-Way, City 2015, Bidding Construction Inspection, City 2016, and I'm referencing the Jefferson Stadium project. But then, under subsection B, I see that it's talking about this next sales tax period beginning in 2017, and I'm not sure why we're talking about 2017 funds.
Well, back, if you remember back when we were talking about the city-county agreement for the eastern side, I think at the time, Mark had had us include a statement in there very similar to that, concerned that there might be some additional traffic issues further down Stadium to the east that might somehow have been overlooked in this existing study.
So that statement's in regards to Stadium Boulevard mainly, not really, because this says Stadium Boulevard between Jefferson and Southwest.
Right, and so I think at the time, Mark had indicated that when we came back with agreement for the stuff on the western side, that he wanted a similar statement to if it happened that there were additional traffic issues beyond the scope of what this project was, that he wanted to be willing to address or be ready to address those as they came up. So that's why that's in there.
I guess...
So it wouldn't necessarily, you know, as far as this project is concerned, it wouldn't necessarily have to be.
Right. I guess I'm a little confused, because I thought that we were talking about Stadium Boulevard between Monroe and Leslie. I thought that was the issue that we had more concerns with.
Jeff, or Mark often brought up on the west side, that he talked at that time about moving parking all the way along there to make that stadium a true outer belt around Jeff City. And that's, I think that's why it was included in there, just to cover that aspect. You know, he was talking about the expansion of stadium between Jefferson and up to Southwest, somewhere where it'd be a main thoroughfare all the way through. It's still a thoroughfare coming through, but it's through a residential area. Parking on both sides of the street.
And it's not a bad, it's not bad to have in there, because it's on our radar screen anyway. I mean, I don't think it's any secret about Elias is looking at expansion and actually starting some construction soon, actually, I believe.
Okay.
And so it's not a bad idea to have it in there. We've already studied Southwest once, and so it's kind of a small study, but we looked at it, and there were some improvements, but it kind of talked about a corridor thing, and it didn't go into that. So long-term, yeah, we'd probably need to be studying it, so, you know, we don't object it.
So it'd be a major study of Stadium Boulevard?
Yeah, we'd have to come back and negotiate all of that. But I think he just wanted to make sure we didn't forget about it.
Okay. I just wanted to...
It's just kind of in there. It's not obligating anything.
Yeah, right. But it's not a bad comment.
Yeah, because everybody's gonna want the money for the next sales tax.
Yeah, we got the next one coming up, so we need to start working on that pretty soon, too. I think it's gotta go on pilot next year. Done it?
Probably in six...
Well, you were ahead of us, so...
Yeah.
Ours is April, I think yours is in November or August. Right, so we'll have to make sure we get on that. If you want to pass that along, too, start looking at the city-county park projects. We need to start talking.
We're putting a list together and kind of a long menu list of items for people that we know our needs, and people can look at it and kind of pick and choose.
You guys good with it? You looked at it, Jill? I move we approve the agreement, setting forth procedures for the Joint City and County Capital Improvement Sales Tax Projects.
Second.
Roll call?
Sam.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes. Sorry, Sam, I'm laughing at you, because you're not much of a multitasker here.
So we did that, and then we have the county concurrence with city to sign supplemental agreement for engineering services for design of Jefferson Street and Stadium Boulevard intersection and other improvements associated with the western side of Highway 54.
Yeah, this is an extension of the first item. It's just a... The county concurred with the city and signed the contract, actually, the supplemental contract with George Butler Associates for the design of the work that you just signed the agreement for.
Right, I mean it's...
Going to the details on the design?
Right, and I think the, you know, essentially, what it is just building off of the traffic study that was just completed and following the recommendations of that traffic study. You know, again, the, you know, 80% of the design cost is going to be covered by, you know, MoDOT STP funds, and then the city and the county would share equally in the remaining $50,000.
We would recommend that the county agree to this, or the city sign the contract.
So does this just outline, what are we looking at here? I mean, just the number of hours?
Right, the contract...
So I'm looking at a spreadsheet here, so...
Right, essentially, the contract is written, or the supplemental, it's basically written as MoDOT would require it to be written in terms of, you know, it's a strictly, you know, hourly, not to exceed contract. And so, you know, they would be tracking their hours for each... And what the spreadsheet's showing is basically the hours that they've estimated for each individual part of that project. And they've sort of broken it out into, it's going to take us six hours to produce the stormwater drawings, it's going to take us 10 hours to produce the retaining wall design. And it's just kind of broken out in that fashion.
Okay, and then what was this other form for MoDOT, I guess, looking at a OH rate attachment?
The overhead. Basically, just on this contract, because MoDOT's got so much money in it, we, you know, this could have been a separate contract, but we already had one. They paid for the traffic study, and so they said, no, we don't want a new contract. You guys gotta do an amendment, because, you know, they're paying the lion's share of it anyway. But because the federal money in it, that involves other regulations, so now we have to have a disadvantaged business help with this contract and various other things that go into this. So to get that money, you know, we have to comport to their format. But, you know, one of them, for example, will have to have public meetings, so they have a subconsultant that will help with that, to help with their cost of the disadvantaged business type issues. So there's kind of a lot of things in there similar to that, I guess I would say.
So when I look at the bottom line of this one, it's 12.6 million. Is that total indirect costs? 12.6?
Well, I think they're... Is that the overhead rate calculation?
Yes.
Right, they've got, and, you know, each, I'm not entirely sure exactly how they come to that number, but it's based on, you know, their accounting of, you know, their overhead for their, you know, their business. And certainly, if you look, you'll see the GBA's overhead rate is different than a number of their consultant, CNPS, their overhead rate is much less. You know, I guess it, you know, goes back to...
That overhead rate is calculated on all the federal guidelines, federal highways requires, you know, they've gotta show all the information, build up to that rate.
So is this just for GBH for the year, or I'm just...
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking they re... I'm assuming that they would recalculate that a yearly basis based on...
Because it doesn't look like it has anything to do with any of the construction projects. It looks like it's basically somebody's balance sheet.
Right, MoDOT approves that overhead rate, correct? They review this.
Well, like, all consultants working for MoDOT would have to have their approved overhead rate, and so there's probably, you take the engineers out of the equation, the accountants get in the middle of it, and they're submitting back and forth with the MoDOT folks, and, you know, probably everything from, you know, the building and everything they do. And there are certain liable rates on the federal guidelines they can charge, and so they have to agree what that rate is.
So that's how they establish their overhead rate? Okay.
For example, when we did the Bond Core Bridge project, or the federal funded project with Parkland West, their hourly engineering, different levels of engineers, technicians, and all that, their hourly rates in that contract were a lot less than what we would want to do a regular contract. Except our contracts that we sign, independent of MoDOT, has all that stuff figured into their whole rate. So it might be a hundred dollars per hour for their senior engineer, whereas in a contract like this, like a Bond Core, fifty, and then their overhead, and then their overhead is figured all separately, and that's because MoDOT requires that when they want to give contracts as well as submitting invoices, they check all that stuff to make sure it's following the federal guidelines. When you look at those rates, it seems pretty high and great, but that's just how it's all figured.
That's fine. I'm just trying to understand all these attachments that you've given me, so...
A lot of it's based on work.
So only one other thing, but in this engineering services contract for 254,000, I mean, they've basically already done the traffic study for both sides, correct? I mean, we had a meeting on that?
Correct.
And so this is just for initiating them to start design work on Jefferson Stadium?
Right, it basically includes, you know, the survey of the site, all the right-of-way documents that are going to need to be written, you know, the design of the project, you know, stormwater retaining walls, roadway, lighting, you know, all those design elements, and then, you know, public meetings and other requirements that the MoDOT money is going to, it requires.
Construction.
So, yeah, take it to the, you know, the writing, the specifications for the project, the assemblage of the contract documents, and then questioning, you know, responding to questions during the bidding process.
Okay.
This has to have anything to do with it, but we've thought out detours, because that road is just so god-awful in the mornings, so when we start doing this, it's...
Right, it's, you're correct. It's not going to be easy. And I think that's part of the reason that we have kind of broken it down the way we have with sort of doing the eastern side this year and the western side in '16, to sort of try to eliminate some of that. And I've talked briefly with GBA about that, you know, and they've, in their consulting work, they've done a number of roundabouts in the Kansas City area that they've constructed under traffic essentially, in one way or another. And so, given that it's a dual-lane roundabout, and talking to Paul Bertrand, he was, has given me the impression that they've done similar things in the past and still been able to maintain some sort of traffic through the intersection.
You got thousands of cars there just in about an hour and 15 minutes. It's just, it's...
Right, and ultimately, the plan would be to time it such that the roundabout is actually constructed during the summer, and so we can kind of eliminate the traffic to the schools. But certainly, it's still a many number of regular citizens through there all the time. So, yeah, it's not going to be easy.
And the detours are planned in the design phase, too. They'll be in the plan sheet.
Yeah, we'll just get 50 open, 50 east open, and then we'll do this.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, it's, it'll be a little...
Hey, it's progress.
That's right.
It's progress. Look at it that way.
So I move we sign the supplemental agreement for engineering services for design of Jefferson Street and Stadium Boulevard intersection and other improvements associated with the western side of the Highway 54 interchange at Stadium Boulevard. Get all that, Lynn?
Roll call.
Sam.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yeah.
Chris.
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Signing of agreement with the Historical Society.
And we have a meeting on Tuesday. I wasn't sure that you guys were ready to sign this one yet. I did give you that information. You needed to be an email, so I'm not sure. So I'll just leave that up to you.
What's different between that and the other one?
They actually wrote their own contract.
Oh, they have their own contract ready.
Did you look at it, Jill? Was it...
Yeah, that's the same one they do every year. I worked with them a couple of years ago. Kind of familiar, so...
Lucky, you went back to 2007, and we've been giving them the same amount since 2007, so...
I think '97 was it?
Was it '97?
Yep, 1997.
That's why I wanted to push the other ones off. I wanted them to send us a contract, and then we approve it, not us send it to them and sign it.
I don't have a problem with this one.
Okay.
All right, so we just need to sign it, or do we have to approve it? It's in the budget?
I need a motion to sign it.
Sign the agreement?
Yes.
All right, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
One down.
Okay. Signing of contracts for trainers at Cole County Health Department. Kristy?
In an effort to continue staff development, we've identified that all our staff could use some customer service training just to, as a refresher. And, you know, to send staff to training, it's about $100 to $200 a person. So I contacted some ladies I knew that are retired from the Department of Health and Senior Services to see if they would come in and do the training at one of our staff meetings, and they will do that for $30 an hour per trainer. So I would like to have them come in for our February staff meeting and do one and a half hour customer service training for our staff. So I have the contracts to sign with those trainers.
You got the money in your budget?
Yes. It's gonna be about, well, it's gonna be $120.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with...
Okay, well, I do. So you got the contract in, and I think you emailed and said Jill looked at it, too?
Yeah, this is our standard contract. Jill looked at it.
I move we approve the contract for trainers at the Cole County Health Department.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good job, Kristy.
Yep, you're doing good work. See you in a little while. Courthouse Restrooms and Maintenance Service.
I put this on there because we had an issue with the bathrooms the other day, so very... Stuff got stirred, so I'd start some more. We've got a couple of bathrooms up there that are private, and I don't think we should have them closed off. I think we might as well look at opening them up, make them public restrooms, and that way, if an issue does happen in one bathroom, we've got it covered. The other bathrooms are closed off if there's a jury and trial, and it doesn't happen very often, but it did happen, and it was brought to my attention, so... Greg said it probably wouldn't be a problem. I think the two bathrooms that we have up there that are designated his and hers or whatever should just be unisex bathrooms, just bathrooms. Single stalls.
I agree.
Well, this is an old building. We've actually got more bathrooms than I, that I thought we had.
We're not gonna fit porta-potties in there.
Well, that was my suggestion. All those emails, you thought, "Oh," I'm just sitting there going... I told Judge Joyce that, and she doesn't understand my sense of humor, so I...
Were you laughing when you said it, or were you...
No, I was...
Well, do you all look at and bring any recommendations to us on what you need to find out, what we need to do to make that a public restroom, or...
Uh, yeah, probably have to change the door lock, take it off a lock system, and just put a regular knob on it, and then put the garbage to make it, the one on the third floor, that's a private, to just open it up to the women's.
And it's gonna be a women's, because it's got three stalls in it.
Right, it's set up for a women's restroom, yes.
That the only one that we have that we can make into a public restroom?
That's pretty well the only way. The ADA's right now, like you said, have his and her...
Probably aren't.
Men and women on it, but we just change them to this type of sign.
Do what?
Do we have any that are ADA?
These, the fourth floor are both ADA's that are single stalls, and there's also a men's restroom up there with two stalls and urinals in them, so we can't really make those anything else. Third floor, both those bathrooms are ADA. They both say men and women on it. Third floor, both those bathrooms are ADA, they both say men and women on them, we'll just change them to this type of sign, so.
Those are the two that get closed off though if we have a jury.
Yeah, and then they also close, like that Wednesday, they had a jury upstairs also, so they close those off. That really just takes your bathrooms down to nothing.
That's my question, Greg. If they have two juries and they close off that third floor one that's connected to jury room and the fourth floor one, are any of those other bathrooms, the private bathrooms, I don't think those.
No, nothing, there's no other ADA's except for in the basement. That's a unisex, that's barely meets.
That's not ADA compliant.
Yeah, that one across from the security guard is.
Yeah, that's ADA. It's got the handrails and everything in it. It's set up for ADA.
Yeah, but I think there's a problem with the width in there. I know Architects Alliance didn't deal with that.
I don't know.
Well, anyway.
I know it's got the ADA sticker or the placard on the outside though.
I'm confused as to why we lock those bathrooms down all day long. Most of the day the jurors are in.
Want to have the marshals come over and explain it?
Yeah, I asked, I asked Don, he and Judge Joyce were in a store and I asked him about that and I said, couldn't, couldn't you say, okay, at, you know, you start your trial at nine AM, say at ten thirty, we're going to take a fifteen minute break and just close them down just for that time period and then they go to lunch and then, you know, in the afternoon, if you still got a trial, say, you know, you come back at one, say at two fifteen or two thirty, we're going to take a break and Judge Joyce says, no, we never know when we're going to take a break.
Well, if they're deliberating in there though, they're in there the whole time and they can't have any outside contact and the marshals don't even want contact with them, so if every time somebody got up to one or two, you'd have to check it and you'd have to lock it.
Sure, when they're in there deliberating.
Yeah, yeah.
It only happens very seldom.
But on a jury trial.
So we can open up them private restrooms.
I, I mean, I see it as their problem. I mean, it's a problem for the marshals and the judges to figure out it's, you know, it's a personnel and timing issue and, you know, they got to figure it out. Our building's a hundred years old and it's not conducive to today's.
They've got to figure it out. They lock the doors and then we don't have.
Well, I, I thought if you could just put signs up, you know, saying, you know, temporarily closed, um, you know, when.
We'd have them other bathrooms open.
I think that.
There's no reason to keep them private or.
Right. That does solve that, opening those other bathrooms, but the handicap part is the only issue.
You got one downstairs.
True, there is one downstairs.
If we have two juries and we still have one downstairs, then if it becomes an issue again, then we'll, we might take that three staller and turn it into a handicap bathroom.
No, we just got, we got, we have a really old building and there's really no.
Yeah, I'm not sure you could with the staff and the tight configuration, if you could turn that into.
Build a ramp.
Well, it's tight to get in there. ADA, you got to have so many feet for your.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We got two things going here and I can barely do one thing at a time. Hold on, Jill.
Third floor, if you were trying to make it to an ADA, you'd have to reconfigure the whole bathroom for, to get to your width and your thing else, so.
I know, we'd have, it'd be a pain, but if we have to, future, Jill, what were you saying?
This is how we got in trouble with Mary Hale in the first place.
Bless her heart.
In, in order to get to the basement bathroom, you have to find a marshal that can take you down that elevator and it took too long for her to get down there, to finally get a marshal, and she had an accident. And this is why the Human Rights Commission wanted to penalize us. The only reason we don't have a penalty is she didn't want them to penalize us. So she was just drawing to our attention, which is why then we made third and fourth floor bathrooms ADA compliant. So when those, both bathrooms, when those bathrooms are shut off, we're back to square one. Just letting y'all know. Jeff was here when this all happened.
Yeah, I'm trying to bite my lip.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out if there's some way you could just temporally, temporarily close them.
Are both bathrooms ADA on the?
Both bathrooms, men and women on third and fourth floor, both are ADA's.
And so if we made them unisex, why would we have to close both of them off?
On the third floor, it's attached to the jury room.
And there is a door that they do close.
The fourth floor.
There is no door.
There's, well, then there'd still be a handicap accessible on the fourth floor that's open.
If they do not have a jury trial. That's what happened the other day, they had a jury trial on the third.
It's attached to the room too?
No, it is not, but they put up extensions and closed, block it off. That's what happened the other day when this all started. They had the third and fourth floor blocked off for both jury trials.
Is that the fourth floor or?
Ask fourth floor.
So the ADA one with the two stalls in it is the one they lock off if they have jury?
Yes, so it's, the prints are not actually drawn correctly. There are two separate bathrooms up there on both floors. Uh, they do block it off with a extension rope across on the fourth floor and then they shut the door on the third floor.
Because I can see that with the third floor, it's attached to the room.
Right.
I know it doesn't happen very often, but then.
Block this off and still leave this one open?
The drawings are not actually correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the.
If you could, if you could.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you can block this off and leave this one open.
Yeah, if we change them just to unisex, they could just block one or the other one.
I wonder if we ought to go over and work with the, the judges and all that and just see what we can, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. It's, it's, there's no place to add more. That's why I was just jokingly saying, we'll put porta potties in.
No.
And, and I was, that was a joke, but Judge Joyce, she, yeah.
I've looked, there's really no other place to put it because the building is full. Uh, you know, open up the women's on the third floor, that'll help some as far as restrooms go.
But we've got to have an ADA.
Yes.
On one of those floors, just.
Let's, let's just look at some options before we make any decisions, but I mean, I mean, I'm okay with making them unisex, um, but I mean, it's going to limit, because aren't, are all of them one stall or?
Yeah, all the ADA's are one stall.
Great big bathrooms, you could put about four urinals on each one, but we have to have one stall.
I'd like to see a, a more accurate, um, chart here because everything that I'm seeing here is two stalls or more.
I have some private one because Judge Green said, don't take my bathroom away. I'm like, well, so, but.
Anyway.
We're just dealing with old buildings. I don't know.
Did we want to discuss, uh, having a maintenance person here later in the day at this time too or not?
Yeah, what we're going to do with the bathrooms and we're just going to leave it be right now or we're going to open that private up or we're going to Greg a look at it and come back with some recommendations or?
I, I, the only recommendation I can make is just we change them to unisex, the ADA's and then open up that private three women stall on the third floor. That would eliminate some of the problem.
I'm fine with that.
It's not going to eliminate everything when we do have two trials going on. We're just going to have to look at that and.
Well, we got to do something with what we've got.
Right.
So, um, we could try that and.
I mean, are the judges and the marshals okay with that or? I just don't understand why we can't just figure stuff out on our own. I mean, it's their building, they work in it, they need to figure it out. I mean, why should we be figuring out what?
Well, maybe Greg and I go over and talk to them too. I talked to Judge Joyce a little bit, but maybe we, maybe we need to get together with them and just see if, if there's something they're comfortable with too.
Have them come over and we'll talk with them in here.
You still want to go over this afternoon and look at everything?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Can you get me some, uh, accurate drawings that show exactly what we got over there or do we have any?
I'll try. I, this is about the best I've come up with so far.
Okay, well, these, these are not accurate at all.
That's why I'm going to go look at them and see what they got and then we'll just talk to the judges and see.
Because I don't want to leave those unlocked. Because if the jury gets in it, it throws it completely down, so. Might as well have them come in and talk to all three of us or else they're going to repeat it three times and I don't want to listen to it twice.
So is the second jury room the problem? Because we've had the same number of bathrooms, we've had the same, everything going on, so I don't know what changed.
Two jury rooms and then somebody throwing feces in another bathroom and we had to close it down for a little while and then when that happens, you have nothing on the fourth floor. Uh, actually nothing on the third floor either because the jury had that one locked down.
Yeah, they had the fourth floor and third floor locked down.
Yeah. So I, I don't think it was a big issue, but somebody brought it up and I might have blown it out proportion, but we have issues at the courthouse.
If we've got them both closed on third and fourth floor, can we keep one floor open and, and say the fourth floor has to come down and use the third floor? I mean, close, closing both floors.
Then you're bringing them out to the public. They could be, get the judge here and then marshal to explain to you.
You know, this, this goes back to what I told Greg. Everybody thinks it's an emergency and nobody wants to pick up a mop and clean it up. I mean, Greg can't be here twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
But he is.
To, to fix some mess. Well, you know, we're not paying Greg for that, so you want to pay him double, um, tell him to turn in his overtime.
Yeah.
And, uh, I bet you won't like that bill, so, I mean, I, I'm sick and tired of people saying it's an emergency and nobody willing to do something about it and so, you know.
If you guys are running around in there like a monkey and throwing their crap all over the walls, that is an emergency.
I don't understand.
Well, it is an emergency, but, you know, if I was there, tell the marshal to go clean it up. I mean, it's like, everybody says, well, it's not my job. Well, you know what? It's not my job either, but you know.
Marshall can't clean it up. That'd be like telling the judge to go clean it up.
Well, that's the other thing, when I got, that Wednesday, I was preoccupied, got back to my phone, one unknown number, no message, another number I didn't know, no message. So I decided to call the, the numbers back. Well, found out it was Judge Joyce's secretary, court recorder or whatever she, her title is, saying the judge wanted me in there ASAP to get this cleaned up. I don't have a problem coming back. Don't get me wrong.
I do. I do have a problem with it because I don't care who you are, I don't care if you're the judge, I don't care if you're the marshal, I don't care if you're the circuit clerk. If I was here and somebody said there was crap in the bathroom, I would go over there and clean it up. I wouldn't like it, but I would do it. And is it my job? No. But, you know, everybody's saying, oh, it's not my job, you do it. No. You fix it and get the bathrooms open. I don't care who you are.
I'll disagree.
What, how, like, in, in a month, how many calls do you get after two o'clock for?
For something at the courthouse?
For something at any of our?
Usually four or five maybe.
A month?
A month, you know, on average.
I think that is their job. I'm not going to tell Debbie to go in there and clean the bathroom. Just my personal opinion.
Yeah, I.
And like I said, it's, falls under my job description anyways.
Yeah.
That little line that says anything else required of me to do.
Well, that's in everybody's job description. I'm still not, I don't know, I'm not going to tell one of the clerks to go in and clean it up. We got staff to do that. That's part of the job.
You know, if it, if it happens four times a month, I, I'm.
This has only happened one time since I've been up here.
Yeah.
That I remember. So it doesn't happen very often. Somebody just brought it up and like I said, I may be blowing the whole thing out proportion, but.
And like I said, I.
Stirred up.
The missed call was like at three oh five, I was back up here like three twenty and I was in and out because I saw Debbie later on, I was done by fifteen till.
This is the problem that I have with everybody thinking things are an emergency and calling Greg and making Greg fix it. And, you know, all these things aren't emergencies. I'm sorry, but they're not. They could wait till the next day or somebody could do it. I mean, if my kid crapped all over the bathroom, I'd clean it up. It's just the way it is.
Some of it's not emergencies, I agree with you. If somebody's door is squeaking when they open and close it, you don't have to call them back in to have it fixed, but if somebody throws crap all over the.
Yeah, I think if, if they call you at three o'clock about something like that, you can just put it off, but if, if this, once, once every two months or something like that happens.
It does happen a lot, so it's not.
Yeah. I appreciate you coming in and doing it.
Wish that brought up, having somebody here till four thirty or till five, till the court closes, so if something comes up, but somebody locks themselves in the bathroom or whatever, we've got somebody here. So I don't think it's a bad idea. Greg would have to rearrange some of the scheduling and stuff, so.
I, I'm not for it. I, I think they keep the schedule that they got. I mean, we have this happen once a year or whatever. I mean, if they have to come back in and clean it up, they have to come back in and clean it up. I mean, why rearrange the schedule for something that's going to happen once or twice a year? Um, people can get more done at five AM than they can all after eight o'clock, so you've got three hours of good productivity and, um, they start rearranging the schedule, then we're going to have to start adding more maintenance people to help out.
Yeah, and you try to get a part-time employee here.
Come in at midnight and work till eight o'clock before I get here. If we're going to get that much done before I get here, I, we can go both ends of the spectrum here.
I'm, I'm good with that too.
I'm just saying it's not, it's not bad having somebody here on hand.
What time does, does your custodian get here to clean?
Usually the staff starts at five in the morning.
And they have to just leave.
And by seven thirty, eight o'clock, we've got the buildings taken care of, cleaned.
And then they got all the other maintenance stuff.
And we do other stuff during the rest of the day.
So we really could just put a closed sign on that one bathroom and left it till the next morning? We could have. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, yeah, it wouldn't be.
Well, the window's open.
It wouldn't be, um, it wouldn't be pretty and it wouldn't be.
Building.
But they're going to call, they call you regardless of whether, whatever it is, so you can kind of triage it and, uh.
Right, if it's an emergency.
If, if it's, if it's something that you can put off till tomorrow, you just tell them, you know, I'll, I'll, we'll get to it tomorrow.
I don't want to make a judgment out of me winding up over at the big house over here, so. You know, I, I've asked around, there really has not been any staff here till five for eight years now. Uh, granted, they had some people that did work nights, come in and clean stuff, but the last eight years, there hasn't really been anybody after two thirty. I'm usually here till three anyways, so.
Yeah, I think once a year for the living windows, we have to run an extension out there for the Candy Cane House, but that, that's something you can do before.
Right.
Yeah.
And I met with Janet, you know, at quarter of five and got her taken care, which is not a.
Yeah. So that's one, that's once a year too, so it's.
Yeah, and then of course we do stuff for the city when they have their stuff up here too, so.
So you're saying leave it alone, Sam?
Well, I mean, if you have an employee here till, till four thirty, five o'clock, is there something for them to do? I mean, my, I just, I can't see having.
They always got something to do.
Well, but I mean, is, is there work for them to do if we would, if we would stagger a, a schedule or something?
We'd have to find stuff. We'd have to find stuff, there's, like Mondays and Fridays, by noon, they're dead. There's nobody in the courthouse.
That's the perfect time to be cleaning them.
Well, we're, we do.
Are you saying just leave it alone, if you're saying leave it alone, we can move on?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking if it's only, if it's three or four times a month, you get a call and most of the time, with the exception of this one bathroom, the others, the others.
Yeah, everything else.
Where really weren't emergencies, they're just something that you could do the next day or?
Some of us, we could, some of us not, like, you know, we get calls for, you know, we had some freezer issues over here lately over at the jail, we've taken care of now.
Donnie and the judge.
Uh, we've taken care of other stuff, uh, you know, it's not just bathrooms we get called for. Uh, you know, air conditioning stuff goes down, I'll get calls for after, sometimes after three o'clock.
If we would, if we could take one of your employees and, and stagger their hour to work.
Then it comes back to which building do I don't start cleaning. I mean, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna have to be a juggle call. If we bring an employee in at one o'clock instead of five thirty, he's still gonna have to clean that building that he's at already, that, at night, after they close. And it takes about three hours to do a building. Some of the buildings, it doesn't take as long, they're a little bit smaller, but some are about three hours of what it takes to do. Time you get the carpet swept, more, floors mopped, bathrooms all done. Clean the fingerprints off the door glass.
I don't think you wanna hire a part-time person to come in.
Right now, Sam, my recommendation, we just leave it the way it is and go. I don't see adding a person from one to five is gonna, the only thing it's gonna do is increase the payroll, which we really don't wanna do.
Yeah, I, I, if, if you're, if you don't mind taking those calls and, and making a decision.
I gotta come back.
If it, if it gets worse and worse and worse and worse, then we're gonna have to do something.
Then we'll have to look at it.
But if, if you're okay doing it, I'd say just, just leave it the way it is, cause.
We'll just leave it the way it is and if it gets worse, we'll have to revisit the whole thing.
I'm good with it, keep, keeping it the same.
Okay.
And then, uh, I'll just go ahead and order some of these to put up on the, of the bathrooms.
But we'll still go over the, and take a little, and we might talk with the judges.
You may change a little bit too, right.
Okey dokey.
I think it was supposed to be set at painted though.
I looked at all those emails between you and Donna and I'm like, holy.
She used to comment.
Yeah, that's, uh.
Hey, what's going on?
Okay, first, first reading of budget adjustment number one.
Oops, Debbie.
I am so sorry, I don't have those ready, neither one of them.
We don't have to do them, Dan.
And you don't have first reading of budget adjustment number two then either?
Put them on the next agenda.
Okay.
You should have budget adjustments in January already.
Well, we have grants and one of them was a grant that was forgotten at budget time, so, and it said the money was forgotten besides.
Forgotten?
Well, I gave that department opportunity.
Just put them on next week's agenda.
Okay, that's fine.
Sorry.
Okay.
Too worried about bathrooms.
No, not, not on my, uh, payroll was.
Okay, approval of state surplus property application.
Okay, this is, basically allows the county, certain county employees to go purchase stuff at state surplus property. And there is a list and obviously it was under Mark's name, I need to put it under your name, Sam. Here's the list behind here of the employees that are eligible to go. Um, I did add your name if you're wanting to go. And I did drop off the names that are no longer here, we do this usually once a year.
Do you have my red Corvette on there, I think that would be good for the, yeah, I could write in praise and everything.
I think the state would get rid of that.
Better up the auditor, I don't know if she'll sign off on that one. We're making her be out the bad guy.
We're gonna approve that?
She just said, I just had to sign, it was already signed, okay, do we?
Yeah, I need a motion for you to.
Okay. You gotta approve it?
No.
Jenna?
I move we approve the state, state surplus property application.
I'll second it, but they put your coffee today.
I will.
I don't know, it isn't coffee.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is it, can I, may I sign it now?
Right, yeah, now we do.
Well, I count on you guys, I said I count on you guys to keep me, keep me honest, Jill to keep me honest, she left the room, so, I'm in trouble. God knows what you have to write.
Hey, uh, yeah, could you go get Steve, but before we move on, could we briefly discuss the EMS, uh, sorry? That EMS battery thing that email was going around?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Know what I'm talking about?
Did he ever reply, do we have any other options?
Um.
Did I reply all to everybody on that one?
So it was fourteen hundred dollars for that, uh, power supply for their receiver for the radio, right?
And he said he has money now to pay for, he may just have to come back here at the end of the year, you know, if the budget doesn't work out. He'll be here at.
Eleven thirty, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if it's a specialty battery that only certain people can carry or?
That's kinda what I was waiting on, the answer first, to find out before I said go ahead with it. You know, how much of an emergency is it?
Well, I think they're using their backup.
Yeah, they're using backup, so it's, it, it's something that probably needs to be done pretty quick.
Is the backup slower or?
Just the only thing to have is that backup.
Yeah, so if that backup goes down, then we're, um.
Have to.
How long's it gonna take to fix this?
This is Thursday, so.
He said, so Mike sent me something, he said it's a battery supply or a power supply, not a battery. Says no other options.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I think, I think we better, I think we better, with the weekend coming up, I could just, boy, if, if our, if our backup goes down, we're, we're, we could be in.
Fourteen, yeah.
Yeah, we could be out of, out of business.
Sixty-eight, something like that.
Anything else from Wireless USA in the last sixty days, is it ninety?
We've had quite a bit with Wireless USA, but most of it's under state contract for removing and adding, um, radios in cars or like shares of permanent EMS.
That's all bid, right?
Would this be under state contract or not?
Maybe, I'm not sure.
Might check that, maybe we can get it cheaper. Might cost more if it's on state contract.
Well, we got, we gotta prove it up to that amount and check state contract and see if it's cheaper.
We put it on state contract, it doesn't count towards the sixty or ninety days deal, is what I was looking at, so.
We need a motion for that or no?
I mean, if you guys tell me.
I just say we do it.
Go ahead and make sure, if it could be on state contract, get it with them, if it isn't, still go ahead and buy it.
Yep, it's the only option, go with it.
I'm good with it, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Proceed.
Yeah, and I, and I guess my, uh, my thought on there was if he has it in his budget now, let's just let him pay for it out of his budget and then we need to do a, a transfer later, we'll do it then.
Well, I think with EMS, we, we can't take any chances, cause if they're on backup and if that goes down, it, it could kill somebody.
I'll ask him.
You know, we just can't.
Let you know how long it would take.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we did the approval of state surplus.
Steve, Steve coming over.
Yeah, we just, yeah, we need Steve. We need Mr. Steve.
While we're talking about purchasing stuff and that sixty, ninety days thing, do y'all actually have a policy that we can maybe email out to everybody as a reminder? Don't be buying crap without getting permission, cause we're not obligated, even if it's installed or purchased or whatever, to pay it. Just refresh their memory on the forty-five hundred. The six thousand. The thresholds.
Debbie, didn't you all send a policy out last year too to everybody?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and do that with the county.
Yeah, we need, we need to remind people.
So there's no excuse.
Yeah, we need to remind people.
I don't know. Is Steve coming over?
Yeah.
Okay.
While we're waiting, can we talk about the chairs?
No.
Yes, we, we're, hey, the new, the new four-letter word is nice, we're gonna be nice.
Okay.
Yes.
Whatever.
Jennifer got me the prices that we just spent on, um, rolling chairs and stationary chairs with EMS when we did them. The cheapest one we got was like two hundred and seventeen dollars. I'm very much looking at something cheaper than that, I think it's ninety-nine dollars for a stationary holster chair sitting in our office, I wonder if you, it's like ninety-nine eighty-six apiece.
How many do you need?
We were gonna get four.
Who's, who certifies your purchase?
We got a son.
Well, if it was something out of my budget, it's under the bid amount, so I could just grab a bite, but since we had the same port of nails, I couldn't do it.
But you still have to sign off on it too, right?
I would just watch your ninety-nine dollar chairs.
That's kinda what I was.
They may be ninety-nine dollar chairs, they may, the first time someone sits in them. Those are gonna be.
There's no arms and it's just like a holster type, like we've done, it's a picture.
Well, that's why we spent a little more on the ones that. They're not just breaking.
Well, you want, you wanna authorize her up to six hundred dollars to?
Jennifer, did you sit in the other, um, desk chairs?
You want desk chairs too?
Can you just come back to us when you get something that you want and we can approve it or, or are you looking to buy these others?
Well, I'm asking, what do you wanna see, do you wanna see the specs of the ones from EMS and then what I'm looking at or?
I would, I wouldn't mind having that, just whenever you get the ones you want, you have them at the price, bring them to us.
Man, I'm like Jeff, I mean, hundred dollar chair, two hundred dollar chair, I mean, I'd probably go to with a hundred and fifty dollar chair, but something in the middle, I mean. You get something really cheap and it's gonna fall apart, you get the most expensive and it's probably a little elaborate, but that's kinda the way I do stuff.
That's why I said with six, you could do six hundred dollars.
How much are them balls that you can sit on, they're good, healthy things for you to sit on too. We need to get those and promote wellness in the county.
Do you use one in your office?
It would cost y'all war for me to have, cause I'd bust my damn head on the credenza. But y'all could get a good laugh out of it.
Maybe we get treadmills and stand, stand on the treadmill and work upright.
Y'all wouldn't be able to hear anything over top of my heavy breathing.
We're talking wellness with Christie, we're talking, doing some camp stuff, so. Just, just, just watch what you wish for.
Yeah.
It might come true.
I'm there.
Okay, Steve's here.
Okay.
Can we get first dibs on the leftover chairs, cause we need one in our office?
We'll sell it to you cheap.
Our boss is cheap, so we need leftovers, we don't need new.
We'll sell it to you cheap.
We want surplus.
If I find one of those balls in my office tomorrow, somebody's.
What?
There's things that show up in my office a lot.
If the health department would bring that over here.
I know.
That would be kinda fun.
I'll buy all kinds of stuff in there.
Do you have a nice chair, we could use another chair in ours.
Get me one of them balls, I'll let you have my nice chair.
Okay.
You do, I didn't wanna do that.
Alrighty.
I got, good, you're gonna get that, okay, let's.
Sam, take your.
Discussion of election equipment.
Yes, we need to decide if we want to buy some memory packs for our old machines or if we're gonna get new machines sometime in the future. There is a service contract that needs to be approved, I guess, if you decide to keep the old equipment. Uh, we're not gonna use some of the equipment, so if we're gonna get new machines, it's kind of a waste of money to spend service contract on the old machines. The service contract we have now is just a parts contract, is all it is, it does not cover labor. So we have several machines broken now, so if we send them down to get them fixed, we still have to pay a hundred dollars in our labor, if Elkins fixes them, we have to pay a hundred and twenty-five if they ship them off to Dominion to have them fixed. And we have to pay the shipping. So, I'm not sure.
But you're gonna have to use those for the April election regardless, right?
Just the scan machines, not the DREs. There's two, you know, we have a handicap machine, we have a regular machine. And we just use the scan, the ballot scanners for the April election. So they give us the option of running a six-month, um, maintenance contract or running a yearly one. Their suggestion is if we're gonna get new machines, not to do the, renew the contract on the DREs, which is the handicap machines, which is about five thousand dollars a year. Plus, uh, they sent us a letter the other day, which I forwarded to you guys, I don't know if you got it, talking about the batteries have to be replaced in them, which is another two thousand dollars if we decide not to get new equipment. The new equipment, the ones we were looking at, we haven't decided on any yet, we haven't sent any bids out or anything yet, but, uh, the one unit comes, the handicap and the regular voting machines all in one unit. So, instead of having eighty units, we would have forty units, so. It's, um, up to you guys to decide, I guess, which way you wanna go. If, if we decide to, to forego some of the maintenance and decide on, you know, get, checking into getting new machines, of course, we have to have them this year, later this year sometime, so we can get trained on them. Because the elections next year come pretty quick. And we have to train our staff and we have to train probably two hundred poll workers on the new machines. So we'll have to have them, you know, late summer. And it probably takes sixty to ninety days to get them, once we order them and they have to go out on bid, I would say, for thirty days, so.
So. In general, old machines, new machines, old machines are gonna need another battery pack?
This here memory pack.
Okay.
Uh, the March election next year is, uh, March fifteenth and then the April election is April fifth, so it's like twenty days in between and these. Once they're run through an election and they have to go back to Springfield to be reprogrammed and there's not enough time for that to happen. So, they estimate the cost of these, Elkins estimates the cost of these from eight hundred to a thousand dollars, they're waiting to see how many people wanna buy them and what kinda deal they can get on them. They have to be manufactured. So if.
So the new machines don't have that, they?
They have a little bitty CD card, but, no, they don't use the same old packs. So if we decide not to get new equipment, then we have to order forty of these packs, I guess. It's, I know, there's no easy way around it, but.
Plus replace the batteries on the old ones that we currently still have.
Right, now, these have batteries in them and so does the other DRE handicap machines have batteries in them. So to do the DRE battery packs was two thousand, which has to be done this year, now these were done in twenty twelve and we, every four years, so next year sometime, the battery packs would have to be replaced in these, all of these, which is like thirty-five hundred, is what they charged us last time, so I don't know what the going rate is now, but.
So those battery packs go in the ballot reader that goes to every precinct?
Right, yeah, we have forty-three, I think, total. They have two now, they're, they have two down there now that they're repairing or couldn't repair and had to send to Dominion to get repaired for the April election, I believe.
Right, we had five machines that needed to be fixed, of the five, they have two fixed, they're still working on fixing the other three, which I know for sure one of them is going to have to be sent to Dominion to be fixed. They said they'll get them fixed for the April election, we're just trying to figure out if we wanna continue spending money on maintenance and batteries on the old equipment.
So.
Or not.
First of all, I don't wanna buy forty battery packs.
You don't wanna buy forty memory packs, I mean, that's decided for old equipment, so.
Right, so, second, I guess my question is. Your head person at an election polling place, do they bring back all the ballots back here?
At the end, they will, at the end of the night, when, once ballot, the election's done, they pack up, they bring back the memory pack and they bring back the voted ballots here to us.
So, I, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel and I don't know where we're at on buying new machines, I think we're gonna have to do that at some point. But, so I'm just thinking, why couldn't we have twenty ballot readers here, set up for one and twenty for the other and we bring all the ballots and somebody just runs them through?
Take too long?
Take too long for what?
To run two thousand ballots through a machine, and you're talking, what, running twenty, twenty thousand ballots through a machine?
Got twenty machines, got twenty machines, we're gonna have, what's the April election, that's just the presidential primary?
Are you talking about fifteen or sixteen?
Sixteen's a presidential preferential thing.
Yeah, sixteen, you're on Aids.
Sixteen's when we're running.
You're gonna be, yeah.
Sixteen's the one that you were talking about, the March and.
This year, we're, we're, we're covered for this year.
I understand that, I'm looking, I'm looking for next year, I mean.
Now's the time to talk about it.
Right, but I'm just saying, I, you know, I understand the situation that we're in and, yeah, yeah, it might take a little bit longer, but, I mean.
Right now, if you're at your polling place and you vote that day, let's say you accidentally overvote on Jesse Schoolster.
Mm-hmm.
You vote for four instead of three, when you put that ballot in the machine, it kicks it out saying you've overvoted. So they're getting a second chance to correct their ballot. They can void that one and get a new one, vote it correctly, put it in the machine. If it comes up here, we have, we won't, they can't have a second chance to correct their ballot because we're feeding it in form. The only thing we could do is override the ballot and it would count everything on the ballot that that override, so they're not getting that second chance voting and that's kinda what these. They didn't have it when we had punch card either. But with these machines, if they're at the polling place, that's kinda what the gist of it is, is they have that chance for a second vote.
That's why Hava was created for the second chance voting, to give her, buy her a chance to vote correctly, ballot.
And then right now, we just take these then and bring them back here and that's how we have the results so quickly, is that we plug this into a machine we have here and it tab, tabulates all the.
We would be counting ballots probably till nine o'clock at night, not even have results out till midnight every election if we had to keep, I mean. They're counting them during that fourteen hours, if you make those count all when we come back to the office, that could be hours.
Several hours.
The packs are also, this pack is for, let's say, Wartsville, only the ballots that are. The packs are also, this pack is for, let's say, Wardsville, only the ballots that are allowed to be voted in Wardsville go into this pack. So, we'd still probably have to have a, one of these for every precinct, because we have to do our election results that way, we have to do an abstract that says Wardsville had this vote this way, you know, and so I think we would still have to have the same number of packs and machines.
Cause every ballot's different.
Right.
You know, there's different.
We have to be abstract, abstract if we didn't.
So, buying new machines, how many machines are we buying?
Forty, I believe, is what we, we just kinda checked them and priced them a little bit, to see what we were talking about, but we're talking about forty new machines.
No, I know, no, I, well, I'm just, it, well, there was one suggestion at last session, that maybe we buy half this year, and then get the other half at the beginning of next year.
We couldn't use them then, because we have to have, have to buy the reader and everything in our office, so.
I, I think the discussion was that we would purchase half of them in fifteen, if I remember right, and then like in January of sixteen, we would purchase the other half, so that we would have the full forty in time for voting in the March election.
Yeah, and then you'd have enough to do your training and, and on.
They have to do training with, get everybody on board on how to use them, and then we'd purchase the other half like in January, to be able to use them in, in March. Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, cause if we keep what we've got now, we're gonna have to buy another regardless, because of, of March and April next year.
Right, yeah, we have no choice.
So, what, I mean.
So, so let me just recap as far as what I'm hearing, as far as the batteries that would have to be bought, we're talking about five thousand five hundred for all of this.
For all of them, yeah.
Yeah, and then for the memory packs that would have to be bought is a twenty-nine, six hundred.
Right, they estimate between eight hundred and a thousand dollars, they don't even know how much they're gonna be yet, so, but that's.
And then the annual maintenance, fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty.
That's for the twelve months.
Yes, for the twelve months.
And they offered us a six month with no DRE, but once you quit it, you can't restart it, so it'd be seven thousand one hundred twenty-five if you just went six.
So, assuming the year one, you're looking at forty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Other than stop now with all of those, if we understand, bid it, see what the bids come back at, and buying it all now, or in next year's budget, they do offer a pretty substantial discount to paying it all upfront, and I had talked to Jennifer about it a little bit, you know, with the bid, I would say we bid the machines, we bid the supplies, when I talk about supplies, I mean the ballots. I don't know if the vendors are gonna agree to that or not, but unfortunately, once you invest in the machine, you have to then also get the products from them, so I think it's only fair to ask them to bid their products too, cause it's a big part of what this thing's gonna cost. And then trade-in value, are our machines worth anything, you know, to some other county, I guarantee they are.
Are they, okay.
Because, and I, I know your understanding as far as waiting, there might be some legislation coming, that may be some help for counties to purchase these, I, I don't know anything about that, so. Pay the maintenance now, potentially have to pay all this other money, this forty-nine thousand, or go ahead and let Jennifer bid it and see where we all.
Well, the maintenance, but, we've got one election this year, right, April. So, so you really don't need to do a year's maintenance?
We just have to do the six month, and then, but that doesn't include the DRE at all, so once we cancel the DRE, we cannot reinstate it, so if you decide now not to pay that part, then we can never reuse the machines, we, we will never have to make this back on them, so, we will, definitely have to buy new equipment.
The last time we talked.
Or you'll have to pay to have them fixed.
Or to pay to have them fixed, I guess you could do that, now, we have several of them broken, so.
We had talked about last time, because it's a question, we don't know if we'll have an August or November election, it's up in the air, so I know we kinda talked about going ahead and doing the twelve month one on the optical scan to cover ourselves in case we do have more than the April election. But the DRE, the handicap machine, we wanna know what we should do with that warranty also, if we're for sure getting new machines there, there's absolutely no reason to do anything with the DRE machines, the batteries, or the warranty on them, because we might as well save that money if we're looking at new machines. And just doing the warranty on optical scans.
Well, and if we do, if we do the six month, April, after the April election, if we've got some machines that are down, they're still under warranty, so we can give them to them right then, and they're gonna, and they're gonna, they're gonna repair them.
And that might help our trade-in value.
Yeah, and then, but then, we don't really need, we really don't need a whole year's warranty.
Just if we have another election later on, when something would come up.
Oh, then you go back to doing the paper way, just we, we.
Back date. You know, we could redo it for another six months, I guess, but we just test the machines, what, right before the election?
But if they're repaired, I mean, if, after the April, if they're repaired, then even if we had a special election, they should be, they should be fixed.
Good to assume they're all gonna work.
It's already up, it was January one when we were supposed to sign it, so they've given us, we were actually supposed to get back with them Tuesday, but, I mean, we wanted to.
Six months would run you through the end of June.
Yeah.
I thought we decided to go ahead and do the one year.
No, we had talked about it, we never, we never.
I know, but I thought we were just gonna say, look, we're, we need to go ahead and do the service contract, cause if another one comes up, by chance for August, we're at least covered.
On all the machines, or just the optical scans then? Not the DREs?
Well, you were saying we don't need to do the DREs.
If we're gonna get new equipment.
If we're gonna get new ones, we don't know if we're gonna get new ones, and I don't know when we're gonna decide that, so I'd say we probably need to have them covered, it was twenty?
Fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty.
Fourteen on.
For the year.
Yeah, the DREs is five thousand dollars.
Okay, I got too many numbers.
I think that's for the newer machines.
I just think we keep the maintenance agreement, so we're covered with the old ones, no matter what we decide, and in the meantime, I think, we might as well get them bid, and see where we're gonna be at, we've got some different numbers, anywhere from two hundred and forty thousand, thereabouts, to three hundred and fifty, for those different machines.
What's the difference, what's the six month?
Six month, uh, you'd have to add like twelve thousand if you have the DREs back.
If you want the DRE, now, we're not gonna use the DREs at all this year, no matter what, you only have to use them every other year, so.
But if we drop the warranty, we can't get it back.
That's right, once the warranty's gone, we can't get it back.
I mean, if there's a good chance you're gonna get new machines, you just don't know which ones, then there's no reason to do the DREs at all, because we'll definitely get machines to build new.
I'd prefer to go ahead and do the maintenance agreement, cause there's a good chance it might rain, and a lot of times it don't.
How many DREs are there?
Uh, we have thirty-nine, we have forty-three optical scans, and thirty-nine DREs.
And DREs are for the handicap? Okay. And so, going forward, if we buy all new equipment, we go from thirty-nine and forty-three, we go down to forty?
If you go with the Elkins, their machine is all one unit, Atkins is. Yes, that's bad.
We have thirty, we have thirty-five precincts, so we're hoping to buy forty, that way we have five spares, so if something does break down, or four spares, we have one for absentees.
Yeah.
But Elkins only requires one machine that does the job of two machines, or Atkins, you have to still purchase two separate machines like we currently have.
Clear as mud.
So, we can get it out when we get it.
They combine the handicap with the regular optical scan.
So, Elkins, you'd have forty machines, with Atkins, if you went back with them, you'd have eighty.
Are they the only two?
No, they're just the only two in Missouri that we could drive to if we had trouble, like, right before the election, if something broke down, you could actually go there and pick something up. There's only three companies that are registered to sell in Missouri, I guess, certified, so.
Okay, so we're.
ESNS is in Oklahoma, I believe. Or Nebraska, so.
So, I guess my thing is, is that, you know, if we put something out to bid today, it'd have to be advertised for thirty days, then it bids, and, uh,
How long to evaluate?
Right, and so, even if we said, say, April first, we made a decision and went forward, I mean, I don't know that we'd have them by an August, if there was an August election, which
I would say, yeah.
May or may not be.
If we had, yeah, if we have an August election, we would have to still use our old machines.
So, a six month maintenance contract doesn't get us to August.
Well, but if you, if, what breaks down in April, you're gonna send them to them right away, they're still under warranty then, so we'd have them back.
Hopefully in August, you would have forty.
Yeah, we'd have them back, so then af, after, say, we have a special election in August, we're not gonna use them again, right?
Right, unless we have a special election in November.
You never know what's gonna happen.
I'm still.
I, I, then, then let's just do a year, just to be safe, and.
On all of them then?
I agree with you, yeah.
Even the DREs?
Uh, I would, I mean, if you're not gonna use the DREs.
If you're not gonna use it, no, then what, that's kind of a.
We're not gonna use them this year, we may use them next year though.
But we can't get started back, so you have to buy a new machine.
So, that's why I think we gotta do all of them.
Buy new machines or pay to get them fixed?
Oh, yeah, payout, right, or payout, right.
I know, it's what we're gonna use next year.
And the service contract is only parts anyway.
How much trouble have you had with the DREs?
Lots.
So, they're junked?
We have, we have nine printers.
And who'd, and who'd you buy them from, Elkins?
Well, all through.
The government bought those.
Dominion, not Dominion.
That was a Hava grant, wasn't it, that they were purchased with?
Yeah.
It was all purchased.
As part of the buyout, punch card buyout program, you got several hundred thousand to pay for old machines.
Did the government make us decide who to go with, or did they just give us money and we?
I think they dumped those machines on you, this is what's available, this is what.
I mean, well, it was the same way as now, I mean, we could either go with Elkins, or we could go with Atkins, or we could go with ESNS, you know, just back then, it was the same way.
Who's Dominion?
That's the manufacturer of the equipment, that's what Elkins sells.
Right, and that's.
They're the manufacturer.
So, Elkins sells Dominion?
Elkins is the distributor.
Okay.
So, yeah, we have nine of the DRE printers that need to be fixed, and we have a D, an actual DRE that needs to be fixed, and we have one that needs an auto with that.
I think it's worth the five thousand, maybe, just to get that stuff fixed for a trade-in or whatever.
Yeah.
That's just parts warranty, now, that doesn't include labor, they still charge us for labor, at a hundred dollars an hour. That's what I'm getting at. And, and the maintenance contract says at their discretion, they can use, new, new parts, used parts, whatever, but still, if we get them all fixed, we. Now, you did pull out a bill from last year.
One of these maintenance agreements that isn't worth.
It was a couple thousand dollars to fix some of the machines.
Until you get the dollar, ma'am.
Until we change our mind and don't do it, and then we don't have a maintenance agreement, cause we can't start over, so.
Um, Elkins said they charge around a hundred dollars an hour to fix the machines, and if we have to ship them to Dominion to be fixed, then they charge like a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, plus you have the shipping and stuff too.
But how much are the parts that they're replacing, if we're paying a labor already, I'd be curious what the parts are, if we're spending, you know, twelve thousand on parts, just for that one election, then it's gonna pay for itself to have that service agreement. But if we're only putting three thousand dollars worth of parts, and we're paying mostly for labor, then we might as well just eat the three thousand and not have a service agreement, so, do they tell you that?
I don't think, no, I don't think you'd know.
I don't think they're gonna notice what they've fixed, or what the part was, it's just, this is, you have three machines, it's three hundred dollars, pretty well is what it is.
Sounds like they got a pretty good racket going, we'll put this three dollar part on, we're gonna charge a hundred bucks an hour. I'm still just, go with it, cause if we don't do the machines, we can't start the DRE contract back up, unless y'all find out that service agreement is just a, not worth it, or just pay it and eat it. Then they'll kick you on the parts prices.
You didn't check in, if you didn't have maintenance, where it's gonna cost us, so.
How complicated is some of this stuff, I mean, have we ever researched somebody locally working on these and buying parts from them, or?
Well, I know in the past, they've said, if, like, Marvin was like, oh, I'll just, you know, open that DRE up and plug that in.
Yeah, plug the wire.
You know, if there's a wire loose or whatever, and they said, if we do anything to the machines.
I think some of these old auto guys, you know, who worked on cars for years, I would think they could just, they got the tools and everything, they just open that up, and you can fix it, fix it in no time.
Just give me a hammer, I can fix them, big hammer.
If we do anything to them, then our warranty, our.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, and I think, I think that's, yeah, I think, I think that's a scare tactic, I mean, heck, I, I mean, in my opinion, so what, one of them goes out of warranty, let's pull the thing apart, let's see what's in there, and maybe we can, you know, if we got five extra, or whatever, maybe we can fix the things, and, you know, it's, I mean, do I know a lot about electronics, no, but sometimes, simple things are easy to fix, and it might just be that we could order parts and have somebody locally fix it.
I don't, I don't know if that's such a good idea, though, like, to certify the results of the election, I don't think you want someone that.
I'm not saying that they, that we program it, I'm just saying that if we need a repair.
But if we repair it, they can't guarantee it's going to count our ballots.
It's gonna be certified.
I mean, they're not gonna stand behind it.
Right, right, the only thing I could do, when I talked to Jennifer about the bidding this out, the maintenance, whether it includes labor, parts, software, and if we do our own repairs, let's concentrate on getting it options for the next time we bid it, I don't think we can go backwards at this point.
That's a good idea, put all that in there when you bid it.
The printing and the programming, cause usually they separate the three things, it's the printing of the ballots, the programming of it as all, and then, then like testing it, you know, they, cause they have to run the ballots through, and they do all that.
And they consider all that part of the maintenance?
That's what, well, that's, no. That's, when you're bidding out new machines, every election, you get charged like those three, when they break it down, those three, so.
It's a racket, that's what it is, it's a license to steal.
Yeah, cause they charge us for ballot layout and coding, and election information preparation, and then the ballots.
It's a glorified copy machine, that can read stuff.
That's all separate, so, it's kind of a racket. And you pretty well have to do what's certified through the state too, so you just can't go anywhere you wanna go and buy equipment.
How long are those machines?
Ten years.
Ten year, yeah.
So, if we buy new ones, how long are they gonna last?
Ten years, I hope, I don't know.
Till somebody changes.
Yeah.
Buy replacements for those of ten year.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't know, what's it, historically, how long do they, is it every ten years, you gotta replace them, then?
I would say ten years isn't bad, it really isn't bad.
Technically, the machines we've actually had, besides punch.
See if it's like anything else, stuff that lasted ten years now, will last five years in the future.
Well, everything keeps, keeps changing, and we keep, I mean, you know, it, it, we're, technology is changing so rapidly, that, that it, it, it might be that they're not, there's nothing wrong with them, but they'll be, come up with some new technology that,
Right.
uh, you know, makes them obsolete.
What do counties that don't have money to buy, what do they do, because?
They'll buy our old ones, I, I like, I like the idea of Debbie saying, let's, let's, let's see if we can get somebody, some other, somebody to buy them.
They may only have one precinct where they have one.
Uh, when I was at the clerk's conference, a lady told me that they had five precincts, a couple of machines broke down, they can't afford to get new ones, so they went down to three, so, they just closed precincts, I guess.
So, they could buy them all, and that way, when one, when one breaks, they just junk it and pull out another one, I.
You know, Warren County bought new machines, and they have old ones just like ours, and I don't know what you're gonna do with them, but.
Is that something else we can do, is find out who, what other counties are uh, getting ready to purchase them, and try to piggyback with their bids?
I don't know, Warren County said they've already ordered theirs.
Are they, the clerks association, have they looked at, trying to do something to work with all the clerks, so we can all get a better deal, or, we get with Mac and see what they can do, and, you know, see if some of our money's worth all of them?
Put the word out, I guess, and see if everybody wants to go in together, I don't, when you, when you, when you do bid it though, I think you ought to bid the, the ballot stuff too with it, so that.
Yeah, I think Debbie said that, that makes perfect sense, cause, hell, I'll give you the machines, I'm gonna charge a million dollars for ballots, so.
Right, right, yeah.
Don't have that in there.
Yeah.
I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to maybe, us consider maybe reducing the amount of precincts we have too. I don't know what kind of challenges that lies, but if other people can reduce the amount of precincts they have, surely we can do it as well.
But that's a formula per voting, I think, if you have so many voters, you have to have, there's a formula you use, that you have to have so many precincts.
You know, Marvin, we have actually done that, I mean, we have, like, we did not get a good turnout like at city hall, so Marvin actually combined them with Cal, Calvary, because we were, we had it open, and there's no one who ever showed up, um, just like Osage City had a precinct, no one ever showed up there, so we combined them with Taugh, so, I mean, we have, we have done that somewhat, I mean, we used to have six precincts in Ward five. We only have four now, I mean, at Ward two, we used to have, when I first started, we had five, we're down to what, three or four, and we have done that somewhat over the years, trying to close the precincts where we do not have a big turnout. But I know people are upset with us when we change our polling places, because now they might have to drive an extra half a mile from the city.
Well, they, they don't even know, I mean, you can, you. Well, they, they don't even know. I mean, you can, you can, you can publicize it all you want, but they're still gonna show up at the old polling place, and then they're mad because they went to vote, and.
I don't have the numbers in front of me, because we have, how many registered voters we have in each precinct. And we tried to, I, I'm not sure where, which ones we could close. I mean, St. Thomas has six hundred and thirty-seven, but Wardsville already has two thousand three hundred and fifty-eight.
Is that the number of voters?
Voters. Yeah, that's the number of voters.
Yeah, I'd be anxious, I'd be interested to see how many people vote on average.
Right, and we have those numbers.
A lot depends on what the election is. I mean, some of these small ones, I don't.
But if Osage has an issue, a ballot issue, and they have to go to Taos, and Taos doesn't even have a ballot issue on that particular election, seems kind of.
I understand.
You're right. I mean, the smaller ones, we could look at closing. I just don't know who you would combine them with. And just like IC Church over here, you know, they have five hundred and fifty-one. That's not really very many. They don't really have a really good turnout. But you have to look at where those people are, and the closest precinct in Jefferson Township would be, for them, would be CC General, which is voting out off of Route C on Beeth Drive. So, are you gonna make these people that live over here by IC Church out in the county go all the way down Route C to Beeth Drive to vote?
What you've, we're out at the co-op there across from Daisy Light. Wouldn't it be better to move them out there? That's closer. I mean, that's.
Right, they're closer. But then, it's also a city precinct. We're voting on city issues. Where Expressway Rental, which is at IC Church, is a county precinct, and they are voting. They wouldn't be voting on the same things. You know, we already have at, where you're talking, the co-op, we already have one thousand five hundred and seventy people in there. So, if you take.
You go early, because we go early. They're, they're, they can be lined up out the door.
Yeah, and that is a good precinct. We have a good turnout there, just like Surf, which is by Gers East, which would be kind of close for them also. Well, they've already got almost sixteen hundred people there voting, too. So, you know, if you're gonna throw another five hundred and some people in there to vote.
See, IC is just kind of bad, because you've got, you've got, you've got fam, yeah, they're dropping off kids in the morning, you've got that traffic, it's terrible. And you got the east school traffic, too. It's, it's, it's a terror.
We're starting to trouble finding polling places. I mean, we basically have converted to all churches, because nobody wants to give us their place to hold it, you know? Nobody wants them around kids, so what left is there, you know, unless you use all your Knights of Columbus halls, and then they can charge whatever they want, and how to use it, so.
Another one is at a moral heights. We've been talking about trying to find somewhere to vote that we can take the people at a moral height, but.
I was by moral heights yesterday. The parking now there is so, is so bad, part of it. If you're going to vote, and they're in school, there's no parking. It, it's.
Yeah, it's bad.
They've won this out for years, and we totally don't know where to take those.
Yeah, it's just, it's.
April will be our last election there. We'll, next year, we'll have it moved somewhere, someplace.
Well, you know, there's security issues with churches and schools, and most churches or, or schools are saying, no. You can't, you can't secure the building. You got all these strangers walking in all day long.
Can you do something like Knights of Columbus or, or the Elks, which are private clubs?
They serve booze. I'm not sure that's allowed to have, you know, that atmosphere, so.
Just trying to think of something close by that has lots of parking.
Yeah, if you think of something.
Because parking is, parking is, that's, yesterday was first time I went by IC during the day when they're in school. There's no place for people, if you're gonna go vote, you're gonna have some people just gonna say, oh, to heck with it.
Right.
And.
They have, I think they have a good rush right when they open.
Yeah.
And then that evening, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So, what are we doing?
So, do we wanna do the twelve year, twelve months, and then could adopt it, or what do you guess?
Want to do the twelve month.
I think Jeff had, I think, yeah, I think, I think.
Yeah, I still changed my mind.
Yeah, I, that's.
Till Sam signed it, I guess.
Yeah, let's, yeah, I agree. Let's, let's do the twelve month.
Sam's just gotta sign the twelve-month one.
On both, yep.
So, we need a motion?
I mean, we sign the maintenance contract with Elkins Swires for twelve months.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now you can sign it, Sam.
I don't want to.
You should have voted knowing, but it passed.
But you got county clerk's signature. Am I down here under here where I'm nobody?
Just sign it anywhere and do, do it under the twelve month.
There's a six-month section and twelve-month. So, the bottom is twelve month.
Sign under the clerks.
Underneath where the clerk would sign it.
Okay. God, I'm second class, it's.
Right, you're the important signature.
Oh.
And then, and then the clerk has to.
Now, we're doing the forty-three or thirty-nine?
They're two different machines.
There's different amounts of machines.
Two different sets of machines.
Okay, so I'm doing both.
So, we're doing both, right?
We're doing both. There you are, ma'am.
There a direction for Jennifer to go ahead?
I'd say let's bid it.
Yeah, I think bid it. I think you're have to bid it.
See what comes in it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, now we got closed session.
Anything else?
Anything else?
No, sorry, didn't have time.
I'm gonna take five minutes. I need to go to the bathroom, coffee.
Let's, I mean, we go into closed session pursuant to six-ten point oh-two-one revised statutes, not done regarding personnel.